We're going to call the order, the Planning Commission meeting. And the date is April 17th, 2019. And the first thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three on the agenda says the approval of the Planning Commission agenda.
So moved to approve the amended Planning Commission meeting agenda.
I'll second that.
Do we have to call for a vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those who disapprove? Nobody disapproved, so the approval is made on the agenda. Item number eight is the approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes on 4/3 of 2019.
So moved to approve?
Second.
Over and barb.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing no opposed, that's approved. We'll go to item number nine, public hearing discussion. Before we go to it, if Jessica could read aloud the published Forest Lake Times.
Yes. City of Columbus Public Hearing Notice, Preliminary and Final Platte. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on Wednesday, April 17th, 2019 at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a request for a preliminary and final platte, Gronquist addition, creating two new lots in the CR Community Retail zoning district. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Applicant is Wilkinson and Hegna, P L L P. Property owner Carl Gronquist. Property location 9252 Lake Drive Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota. Signed Elizabeth Merco, zoning administrator, submitted to the Forest Lake Times on April 1st, 2019, posted on April 4th, 2019.
Thank you, Jessica. Is Mr. Gronquist or is representatives here?
My name is Roberta Gronquist.
Okay. Could you have come up to the seat up here? You must be the represent-
Wilkinson and Heg-
Why don't we get up here, we'll just say it in the microphone, who you are, state your names.
Sure. I'm Roberta, Roberta Gronquist.
Okay.
And, well, we'll say wife of Carl.
Okay.
Anyhow, so I'm representing Carl because he is out of state, in the state of the Lone Star.
Okay, you can have a seat. Yeah, okay. You can sit right up front here. I'm sorry.
At the table.
I'm sorry. If you're representing him along with these two, yeah. And your name, sir?
I think they have legal counsel representing him.
Okay. All right.
Morgan Kavanaugh, Wilkinson and Hegna, representing developer of the property.
Okay. So they can have a seat too.
Yeah. Thank you.
We just got a new sheet tonight that's dated April 16th, so I guess if Carl was here, but if you're representing him-
I'm not representing Carl.
He's representing a lot.
I'm representing the developer, the applicant.
Oh.
I'm representing Carl Gronquist, and of course, if there's any questions, I let this gentleman here know that he can contact Carl, he's waiting by his telephone, so if there's anything, any questions that come up for Carl, we can talk with him after the meeting or whenever, so.
Right. The applicants are the developers and the landowners are the Gronquists, so the applicants will be presenting.
Yeah, okay, all right. Kind of confused on that though, because on that new sheet you gave us, is that the applicant or is that the owner?
The applicant in this particular case is Wilkinson and Hegna.
Okay, so they're the ones that made these changes on, no, that's the owner.
You have a letter, you have a letter from Wilkinson and Hegna addressing the report from the engineer and planner.
Okay, all right. So you want-
I think Roberta's here as representative of the landowner, but again, you have, the applicant will present their, their application.
Okay, all right. Do you want to explain then, as an applicant, what you plan to do there, or what your future on the land, the one piece, the 10 acres?
Yes, Chair, members of the commission, as I indicated, we represent the developer of this endeavor. They're looking to simply acquire a lot two, which will be, hopefully lot two, and Gronquist will retain possession of, of the new lot one, which is his residence, and will continue to live there. There's no planned development for lot two at this time, it's purely a acquisition for potential future investment endeavors for the developer. So in your materials, you'll see the survey, the proposed replating of the property, which we've combined into, we've combined the preliminary and final platte, because there will be no changes from the preliminary and final, because there are no proposed changes or developments at this time. And you'll see lot one will be, the new lot one will be, retain the residence and the outbuildings, the new lot two would be the rest of the property that would be simply held for, for potential future development.
Okay. I understand now. I don't know why, I read all this stuff over, and the only thing I seen down there once is what the county said about the driveway, that's about it, but you understand that.
Yeah, the county did mention that, you know, they obviously don't like to have the true curb cuts and, you know, it's a busy road, but since there's nothing planned right now, they, they let it be and then, you know, reserve the right to comment later if something else is proposed on the site. The other item that we mentioned in our letter was the requirements, when there's a replating of land that sewer and water hookups are obtained, that was our request to have that requirement waived as to lot two, since there are no plans to develop that lot at this time. Mr. Gronquist will continue to live at the property and he could certainly make a request if he felt that that wasn't appropriate, but I haven't received any information about that at this time, as to his lot. Since he will be living there, I assume the city will insist upon that.
There's, right now, we are under, this year is mandatory connection in that district, so they will be, they would have been required to hook up regardless if they did subdivision or not, so in this particular case, the October is the deadline for sewer and water hookup. There would not have been a requirement for you to hook up on a vacant piece of property, however, you would have, through a developer's agreement, understand that you would incur the cost once you developed the property and you would be subject to both sewer and water connection fees.
Understood. And that's the basic lay of the land on this request and proposal. I'm here for questions if you have any. Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission.
Chris, do you have anything, any questions?
I just, I did notice in the engineer's report, I believe, something about the existing sewer line and water line being shown on the plat-
That it wasn't shown on the plat? Right. I mean, is it? I think-
Number six on the-
No.
Number four, I think is the number.
So both lots will be required to hook up to city utilities, number six on the-
No, it is number four, you're right, because it does say existing city sanitary sewer and water utilities should be shown on the preliminary plat. Sanitary sewer main line exists on the north side.
Mm-hmm. And certainly that would be, you mean, that would be a condition of the engineer.
I know on the one picture, there's sewer listed, and what is that in reference to? By the, I assume the SBA, B and C are the soil boring, or what are them, what is SPA on the picture? Page area? Oh, 11? 11. I wasn't, I don't know what that means.
So I think you're looking at the attachments to the watershed district's decision?
I believe that's where they did the soil borings, the testing, to determine wetlands, delineations, so that was part of the process to-
And then there's a sewer back in the back corner?
The sewer stubs should be in the street. Oh, those are soil borings, yeah, I think those are, which, which would be, yeah, these are samples, so the yellow dots-
Right, what is that?
I don't know how they, I don't know how they would be able to, um, did you, did you do a locate for the, the gate valve for the sewer? Because there's a green, there's a green triangle on your, on the, and I think that is, I think that is the Rice Creek map.
Because at the property too, there's like black plastic that's kind of surrounding, kind of back in that corner, so.
Did you notice that when you were out there?
I just was curious, because I thought the hookups were-
The, the stubs are in the street.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that was.
These are, these are Chelag's photos, so it's, and you're right, it's, it's from the wetland delineation, but I don't, I don't know what he was, I don't know what he was putting, I don't know what he was flagging on the map.
Yeah, and we're not aware of any, any other issues in that corner from our survey, surveyor, anything like that.
No, no, looks good.
Barb, you have any?
Well, I was questioning what it is zoned at. It, and the public hearing notice says it refers to, it is CR, Community Retail, and then the city planner's letter says it's rural residential. Which is it?
It is community retail.
Okay.
The use is residential, but the, the zoning is commercial, commercial retail, community retail, yes.
And don't both of those require a five acre minimum for the lots, each lot, lot size?
The lot size in the freeway district is one half acre if you're hooked to public utilities.
So will they have to hook up to public utilities then? Because they want to postpone it.
The, the city's requirement is that they hook up to, to utilities if, if the Planning Commission feels that, you know, there's a waiver or you feel that it's appropriate, you can certainly recommend it, but I will say that there's, this year is mandatory requirement for everyone, and so regardless of whether they did the subdivision, it would have been required-
This year?
This year, by October.
So their request to prolong the hookup would not be appropriate then?
We're referencing lot two, which will have no buildings or any development on it at this time, so lot, lot one will be continued to be used as a residential property and he'll be required to hook up-
Yes.
-is my understanding, but we, we feel it would be, if there's going to be sewer and water brought to lot two, it wouldn't be used, it would be a waste of resources to, to bring that to that lot.
Isn't that a requirement though?
It's, there's a vacant lot, there's no, there's nothing developed on it, so until, until there's development on the lot, they don't have to bring utilities. You wouldn't know where development was, they would be bringing pipes into nowhere.
Right.
It would be, it would be just guessing. We have never required anyone to, to bring in utilities, although I understand what the engineer is talking about, there's no stubs to the second lot. You'd be required to put in the stubs and extend the lines when you do develop.
Right, and just so you have some context too, we're in, we're in a purchase agreement right now, doing a due diligence of the property, this is part of that. In the purchase agreement, there's a right of first refusal as to lot one, so in the event that, that could be brought into, you know, any potentially a future development project, so there's, and recombine basically into whatever the proposed development would be. So then at that time, there would already be sewer and water going to lot one, which would also serve as potentially lot two, depending on what was put there.
Correct, and so because of this issue, I know what the city attorney's going to say, and he's going to say, if there's any, if, we would have had a developer's agreement anyway, it would have been short, you know what I mean, so in this particular case, what he is asking will be articulated in the developer agreement, and it will say, when he develops, he will put in a second stub and he'll, he'll make sure it's separate from, from the other lot, and it will actually state it in the developer's agreement as to when he develops, and then it will be recorded with the plat.
So this will never come back to being one lot again? You plan to keep two lots?
It just might be under one ownership and one project, correct?
All right, so we're splitting it now, but future it could be one.
Right.
Okay, I see what you're trying.
Right now, but it will be separate ownership?
Right now?
Right now.
But there is a potential that you'll come back and absorb that, or maybe make an offer on the, on the-
Correct.
-home, okay.
Yep.
And then at that time, you would make it back into one? Depending on what you-
Be back here asking for site plan review and the development, you know, all that.
Correct, depending on what your use is.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions, Barb? Jody?
No.
All clear? Okay, it's our standard practice here, when we open up to public hearing, if you have a seat in the back and we can call you back up for other questions if we need to.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to open up to the public hearing to everyone and anyone who has any interest in this matter, they can step forward, state their name and their address and their concerns or their opinion on this. I don't hear them running. Nobody wants to come up? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and let's discuss this. Barb, you have any?
Well, my primary was concern was about the five acre limit, but apparently that's been resolved.
Okay.
It's not an issue. And there is no planned development, so there's, it's just going to be what it is now, a vacant lot, essentially.
With the residential on the other side.
The lot two.
Okay. Any other issues?
I think we just need to make note in our recommendations then, that any future developer agreement will be, you know, either gone through with the attorney or whomever, just so that we know that they'll have to have a more substantial, I mean, that's pretty vague where it says number six, future development with the plat, subject to local ordinances and permitting requirements. They really have to have that developer agreement, so we know exactly what the intent on that is.
Number six, right?
Would be number seven on the recommendations.
We're just going to add-
Just add that.
A developer's agreement would be required.
You have anything else there, Jody?
I don't.
I'm sorry, what?
I do not.
Oh, okay. Pam?
I just had one quick question, when we were reading over this new stuff here, I saw, I thought I saw something looking for a deferment on, hooking up on, on property one. Did you guys see that? Where did I see that?
Yeah, I guess that gets on the Wilkinson-
Okay, there we go, all right, yeah, yeah. Can you refresh my memory, Elizabeth? Have we deferred this before, or?
So public utilities came to this district in 2005, not in this particular quadrant, but in 2008 sewer and water utilities were put in, and it was five years mandatory hookup for sewer and eight years for water, and the councils at that time extended it, and they extended it twice. And now, 2019 was a hard mandatory hookup for both sewer and water, for all districts, because now it's 10 years. It's 10 years since the utilities were available in that district.
Okay.
And really, this I think is just talking about lot two delaying, not lot one.
Right, well, lot two, there's like, they were discussing, there's no plan as of yet, so there's nothing to speculate there, but I just had remembered in meetings in the past that we had touched on that, but I didn't quite remember all of the details, so thank you.
That's all I have, sir.
Chris?
No, I'm good.
Well, I have nothing either, other than, anybody want to make a motion on this?
So the notes that I have in here, you're, we're changing the zoning, so on the planning, planning letter dated April 17th, we're changing the zoning letter to reflect that the zoning is community retail, which is a CR district, and then we're also adding a condition seven, and that's a developer's agreement to address the future development and connection to public utilities for lot two. And I will ask the engineer what a green triangle means, because I do not know what a green triangle means.
Doesn't a green triangle mean sewer?
No, it's sewer on there, but I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know, on that map, I don't know what it's referring to.
I think it's referring to the septic system.
I don't know why the septic system would be so far back on the property, though.
Well, that's true.
Because we're talking about the very rear end, end of the property.
Right, right.
So I, I don't, I don't know what that means, so I, just ask him. Just ask him. And then in addition to the conditions, it would be subject to any condition in the planner, or, I'm sorry, the engineer's report, which is the revised report, which is dated April 14th. Because there's some, there's some inconsistency with the drainage utilities meant, so it would be subject to any conditions he has on his report.
Spelling on the name doesn't mean nothing. Does it?
We'll make sure, we'll make sure he, he corrects that too.
Okay. Carl with a, it's Carl with a K, right?
I don't give it a shot here on a motion, so we'd like, I'd like to entertain a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That we, the Planning Commission, move forward, Wilkinson and Hegna, P L L P, property owner Carl and Gronquist, property location 9252 Lake Drive Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota, with the findings and facts, one through 12, staff, staff recommendations one through seven, seven being an addition, and so I'm going to have, I think this is, I got the wording right here, with the addition of a developer's agreement, that would be required addressing utilities for lot two, that we move this forward for approval.
Anybody want to, do you want to discuss that, that she just said, what Pam said?
Did that sound good on that seven?
You'd want to include the letter from April 14th.
Okay, thanks. With the, also including the letter from TDK, I'm sorry, TKDA dated April 14th for approval.
Any other discussion on that motion?
No.
Take it for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those that oppose? Nobody opposed, so we'll forward it on to the city council for our support. On the agenda number 10, we're going to go to the public hearing on the northeast quadrant. Jessica, could you read the published times?
Yes.
Notice?
City of Columbus Public Hearing Notice, Preliminary and Final Platte, Northeast Quad 35, and Conditional Use Permit for Planned Unit Development, P U D. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on Wednesday, April 17th, 2019 at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a Conditional Use Permit request for a mixed-use planned unit development and preliminary and final platte, Northeast Quad 35, within the CR Community Retail zoning district at the location described below. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Property owners are the City of Columbus. The applicant is Columbus 3597 JAMP LLC. Property location is 20.33 acres north of TH 97, east of the TH 35 Bridge in Columbus, Minnesota. Signed Elizabeth Merco, zoning administrator, published in the Forest Lake Times on April 4th, 2019, and posted on April 4th, 2019.
Thank you, Jessica. We're going to ask that Phil from Hy-Vee and, is it Tom, and the third one? We'll have to- You state your names and who you're representing.
Phil Hoy, Director of Real Estate with Hy-Vee.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mark McReed, all agents here, we did the preliminary plat and the set and like, in super prime.
Plating Chair, Commissioner Members, I am Tom Palmquist. I'm a member of Columbus 3590, 3597 JAMP LLC.
Well, this is a big project. I don't know where to start. You've been up here before, well, been before to workshops and everything like that, and now we're on another phase here, so you want to tell us where we're at now? Where you want to go?
Sure, you're right, this is a big project, and where we think we're at in the process is to a point where Hy-Vee has done a design of their, their project on this site and is ready to advance that project forward to Planning Commission and Council, so site plan approval, along with that needing zoning approval to make sure that our uses fit and comply with your- to make sure that our uses fit and comply with your, your zoning ordinances and laws and rules and those things. And so, the zoning application is to, to encompass the entirety of the 3597 JAMP parcel that's currently owned by the city. So, the whole northeast quadrant parcel. The zoning is to, to be over that, we'll say as an umbrella. Elizabeth's word, but the umbrella zoning, over the entire property. And then, underneath that is the Hy-Vee application before you also this evening for site plan approval. And then, before all that, I should have said, there's a preliminary and final plat that's happening, that the city's actually the applicant on. Or it's the city's plat, and JAMP is listed as the applicant. So, if that made any sense, that's where I think we're at. So, we're before you tonight, really, to get approval on the zoning, the CUP for the PUD zoning. And the reason for that would just be to allow for flexibility of, of, on the zoning ordinances where it's appropriate, where it can be applied. And which is, there were a few examples of some flexibilities that would be requested, be it in setbacks or parking requirements, some of those very specific areas, which is typically the areas where PUDs are used, PUD zoning is used. And then, as additional applications will come forward, there'll be this, the similar process that Hy-Vee's in right now, where that application will come before you. You would look at whatever, what it would have been normally a variance, you'd look at whatever flexibility they were requesting under the PUD and either grant those or not grant those. And if I've misspoken anyway, Elizabeth, I'm sure can correct me from a planning standpoint, but.
And from, I'll just call the entity that controls the property, JAMP, for ease of not having to say the whole thing. JAMP provision being back before you multiple times here over the next several months and into next year, as Hy-Vee being the first piece of this puzzle. There are gonna be subsequent pieces of this puzzle as well, in terms of users, uses, and, and specific site plans and building elevations, whatnot, that you can respond to.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off, because I, I think that in order to kind of lay it out for you. So, tonight, we are doing, we're doing two public hearings, but we're doing it combined. And we did that because it's still, it's, it's, it's one application, or I'm sorry, it's several applications, but it's still the same piece of land. So, we figured it would be easier if we only had one public hearing. And each one of us has a part in that role. So, I'm gonna start off with the preliminary and final plat to give you an idea of, of what things are happening at the city level, because what's unique about this project is the city is on both sides of this. We're acting as a developer, although we have a developer that we've now have purchase agreements with, but the city owns land. So, normally, we're just on the regulatory side. And, and so, we're kind of put in a situation where on both sides of the fence, let's just say. So, let's look at the preliminary plat. And this is the preliminary plat we have here. The city owns, owns all of the property, and it's in the area of, you know, 20 acres. And so, when we looked at this area initially, and when the city initially bought the property, we knew that we were gonna relocate the road. And this, this is Hornsby Street North. We have Hornsby Street to the south, which we relocated several, excuse me, several years ago. And so, when we bought the four quadrants, we, again, knew that this was gonna have to be relocated. And that was one of the reasons why this property was, was bought. There's another public hearing that's gonna happen on May 8th. At the last City Council meeting, they adopted a resolution, and that was an intent to vacate Old Hornsby Street. Old Hornsby Street, it's about here and kind of goes up here and travels to the jurisdictional border. The City Council will hold a hearing on May 8th, and they will vacate the entire street, meaning all of the right-of-way. And once that happens, then this preliminary plat and final plat become key, because the road then will become what they call a public right-of-way, and it will be platted. And so, this is the new area where the road is gonna be located in. And this is part of the bridge project and part of that construction project. And so, when we looked at the road, we knew that this area was gonna need public utilities. Because as you heard, JAMP indicate to us earlier, or you may or not, may, may or may not have been at the EDA meeting, they have big plans for the area, and they need sewer and water. They also need stormwater ponding. And in this particular case, rather than having, and, and right now, they can have one development, or they can have 20 developments. We don't know yet, you know? So, as far as how many applications are gonna come through, we don't really know. But what we wanted to, what we wanted to do is, we didn't want to have every single lot have to put stormwater ponding and take care of their stormwater. So, what we did was, we did a big overall plan. And with the overall plan, you'll see there's outlets. So, generally, we do not plat, we do not do plating and have outlots. But in this particular case, we will, because the city will retain jurisdiction over some of the stormwater ponds, because it treats the water coming from the street. And others, JAMP will have, or the new property owners will take jurisdiction over, because it treats their water. So, in this case, there's gonna be a stormwater pond in this corner here, stormwater pond in Outlot D, and then, a larger stormwater pond in Outlot B. And again, we, we don't normally have outlots, but this is kind of unusual, since we don't know where the lot lines are gonna be. We had a long discussion between the survey and the attorney and myself. And we decided that, yes, outlots would be best. In this particular case, the outlots you've seen in the past were undeveloped lots. And in this, in this case, the outlots are lots yet to be developed. So, so that's why you see a lot of outlots here, and then, you only have one lot. And that's block one, lot one. And that is the lot that Hy-Vee is purchasing. And so, looking at that reference to an umbrella. So, if you look at it in big picture, we're gonna vacate the road. We're gonna relocate the road with this plat. So, the plat has to be, you know, recorded, the final plat will be recorded first. Then, JAMP is coming in, and they're saying, you know, I have a really big plan. And my plan is over the entire plat. So, you have an umbrella over the whole plat. And what they were talking about is, when you have a PUD, you have what we call variations. And the variations are in different parts of the code. It can be for setbacks, it could be for signage and such. And then, I'll let them go through their own variations of what they're asking. So, they're not variances, they're variations in the code. But you're allowing that, because they're master planner, or they're having a master plan. And because of that, they're asking for deviations, because they can't accommodate all of the setbacks in this small area. So, with that, so you have this conditional use permit for a PUD. Under that umbrella, they can have, right now, they have one development, but they can have 10 developments or 20 developments, and they're gonna keep coming back to you. So, the CUP is gonna constantly come back to you, and you're gonna use those variations. And then, you're gonna approve developments underneath that umbrella. Now, in this particular case, you have Hy-Vee. It's not a conditional use permit that are used to, it's not an interim use permit. It's simply a site plan review, and that's because it's permitted. So, there are no conditions in this. If he meets all the requirements in the code, or, in this case, he's asking, I'm sure he's asking for some variations, under that umbrella, that he's gonna use on his lot. I don't know if that's sure, but I'm pretty sure that there were some setbacks in there that he's asking for. And he'll be allowed to do that, because it's under that, under that PUD. So, a little bit different from what we're, what we're accustomed to, but it's a tool that's in our toolbox that we're, that they're allowed to use. And so, in this case, that's why you have many reports. You have one report for the, the planned unit development, or the conditional use permit for the planned unit development. And then, you have Hy-Vee's application for a site plan review. Questions about process and layers of permits?
I don't have a question. I just, I. Came to a few of these, but, so Hy-Vee's buying the land.
What, a lot one block one, right?
Right. They're buying that. The rest of the property under the umbrella will be owned by JAMP then, and leased out?
Possibly, but it's, it's also possible that through our marketing efforts, we bring in another buyer like Hy-Vee, that would, would parcel off a portion of what remains of the JAMP property, and go through a similar process, as Hy-Vee is now going through, to have the lot and block designation, the site plan approval, building elevation approval, et cetera, for their particular lot. That's, that's the flexibility that's allowed in kind of that PUD umbrella. As I say, there's gonna be a lot of bites at the apple that you're gonna get, relative to seeing us come, coming back to you with specific requests for specific uses on specific lots.
Is this, is this unique, or is this done a lot in other cities, or whatever, where they'll take a, a developer and?
I think it's common. I think it's fairly common.
Common?
Very common. We, I mean, Hy-Vee itself purchases large lots, develops, will create a PUD zoning over the whole entire lot, and develop those of the lots, sell those of the lots and develop. It's, it's quite, quite common.
So, these, these pondings that we're talking about, if you sell that lot or that block, it's that party's responsibility that, am I losing something here?
Well, as, as to the pond, I think, you know, ultimately, as part of the development agreement process, there's gonna be a pond maintenance agreement that all the parties that are owning property, could be JAMP, could be, well, JAMP, Hy-Vee, anybody else that owns a lot, will take, subject to a pond maintenance agreement that will govern the operation, the maintenance, the cost sharing.
Kind of like an association, then?
Very much so.
Because each of these ponds jointly take on the water from all the lots.
Okay.
And it's not jointly, there are some ponds that'll take on more water from a certain development. One pond might take more water on from the street, one pond might take more water on from Hy-Vee. It just depends on, this area has three different areas that it drains to, so it's a little bit more complicated than most. But in this case, even Minn Dot has a small pond along the, the on-ramp on the property also.
Yeah, so if you want to point that out, if you've got a pointer, there's a fourth pond, actually, that's gonna be on Outlot A, right in there someplace?
Some, someplace in here.
Correct. And.
It's not quite there.
Generally, everything west of Hornsby is gonna drain to ponds west of Hornsby, and everything east of Hornsby is gonna drain to ponds west of Hornsby. And there's some connection between the pond that's on the southeast corner of Lot One Block One and Outlot D. But we'll, we'll be working with TKDA to, to figure that all out. TK and the city attorney to figure out the documentation and where the water's flowing and.
And the approval for that overall master stormwater plan is, is in process right now. TKDA is developing that plan and has resubmitted it to the watershed for, for approval.
Well, Elizabeth, what do we work on, the umbrella right away? Or do we work on Hy-Vee right away?
You know, either one you can work on. The site plan review does not require a public hearing. And so, that one is kind of on its own. But in order for Hy-Vee to take advantage any of the variations, you would take on the, the planned unit development first, and that conditional use permit, public hearing. So, Tom, are you prepared to talk about variations that you're asking from the code?
Yeah, I mean, I think the staff report in the findings of fact basically provides a summary of what those are. I think our conduct from Alliant and Phil can expand on those as, as well, you know, relative. I mean, again, we're coming, we're coming in with some specific requests on the Hy-Vee application, which follows the discussion we're now having. So, you know, if it's okay with you, we can kind of jump in and, and get specific. So, we're not trying to hide the ball, we're trying to be very transparent, trying to be very forthright. But again, we're trying to operate within these guidelines of the umbrella, relative to your approvals. So, however you want us to address any of this.
Well, whatever's the easiest for us to understand. I, I can see, I read a few of these on Hy-Vee. I don't know about, maybe we go down the line, did you have any?
This is the, the one he's referring to, is the staff recommendation?
Go to Jody here.
This is just, it's a smart growth plan, I like it. What I'm looking at is, do you know what your, like, short-term, immediate other entities would be, so that we can include some of those variations in this right now? And maybe some of your long-term ranges, as far as what might be coming that might need something tangible in here at this time?
Unfortunately, no. Would love to. But as I say, we're gonna be back to you, and, and, and whatever those specific requests are, you'll be able to address those at that time. I, you know, I think the general ones are noted in nine, A, B, and C of the findings of fact, D also, I'm sorry, there's four. And we can just wrestle specifically as to the Hy-Vee plan and how it relates. And you'll see visually what that request is.
I would say, more times than not, the most common request, and, not deviation necessarily, but the most common request through a PUD would be setback variances. More times than not, it's, it's, and even in, even within Hy-Vee's application, most of, most of the issues in the staff report deal with setbacks and, and where certain easements lie, and certain improvements lying within those, within those easements. So, in more, more cases than not, that becomes what the PUD is used for, is for setback variances. And my guess, that would be very common going forward as well. Possibly parking variances, but, or building height variances. Those are kind of more the common variances that I see through the PUD. But as it relates to the Hy-Vee, the Hy-Vee application, so we can talk about specifics, most of the issues in the staff report deal with, deal with the setbacks, or deal with drainage and utility easements, and improvements being within those drainage and utility easements. And so, for example, on the, there's a, there's a small section of parking next to the, one of the access points. And that, that parking section is within the Hornsby setback. And so, our request would be that we be allowed to have parking within that, within that setback. Or the, or the easement.
Does Elizabeth have this plan?
No, she would have our, our plan, plan.
It'd be on the west side there, then, right? Of Hornsby there, that long straight line?
Correct.
21, or whatever it says there?
Correct.
So, how much are you talking about on taking easement? Is that?
It would be maybe 10 feet.
Well, that's, that's really.
Yeah. It's maybe 10, it's maybe 10 feet, about, about 10 feet, basically.
So, Elizabeth, how would that affect the city? If they, on an easement like that?
No, earlier, I had a conversation with the mayor about this. And I haven't, I hadn't had a chance to talk to the engineer about this. Generally, we take easement, drainage and utility easements for water and sewer lines and utilities, and I'm not sure how overlapping that could be. Because at the end of the day, we still have to put sewer and water and utilities in the, in the easements. And so, I'm really not sure how, how much we can shrink them, or how, or, or whether or not you could put parking over them. I'm really not sure how that's gonna work.
Yes. And I'd add to that, for our own sake, there's a comment in the staff report that deals with improvements within those easement areas, and the encroachments within those easement areas. We wouldn't want to put improvements in easements that had the potential for, say, above-ground improvements. So, in other words, we, we wouldn't want a telephone pole to be able to be placed in one of these utility easements that's located in one of our drive-iles. So, that wouldn't work for us either. So, I think, I think in a case like, like with the easements and with the improvements we have currently placed in those easements, we would want to work with staff and the consultants to understand what improvements are planned for those areas, what kinds of language around those easements, what would be allowed for improvements. We would certainly, there's certainly been cases in the past where we, as an end user, would. would agree that if there were improvements that needed to be changed or modified, that it would be our responsibility for any work that would have to be done in those easement areas. That's pretty common, and one of the requirements here, even the TKDA pointed out, that it would be acceptable that we had improvements so long as we understood that any repair or replacement would be the responsibility of Hy-Vee. Yes, that's very common, but we certainly wouldn't want any easements to affect our use of those areas. If that's the case, then we'll just redesign those areas.
Like if there's a sewer problem, they have to dig it up?
Yeah.
And who's going to pay for it? I mean, who's going to re-landscape and do all that?
We would landscape and redo it.
Anything below grade, if the sewer needs to be replaced, that would be...
Cities.
Only the city, but the repairs made, you know, the contractor leaves and then Hy-Vee puts it back together.
Which would all be laid out in developer agreement.
Yeah.
Right. And we would want to, as TKD finalizes their plans, I think these areas become a lot more clear as far as what could be in those areas and what cannot be in those areas. We just don't know right now.
Does the planning commission have the TKD memo on the Hy-Vee site plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you look to lay out point number two on the first page, what Phil was mentioning is referenced there in the last sentence. So referencing those three sentences, but parking area adjacent to Hornsby is in the drainage and utility easement. Certain landscaping improvements in those areas as well. And I'll quote, "This is acceptable with the caveat that if repair, replacement, relocation of any utilities in these easements become necessary in the future, the repair, replacement of any development surface improvement are responsible." That's the context. And that would flow through to a development agreement, and that would be your mechanism for control.
Mr. Chair, is there any other concerns that you might have, Elizabeth, that you want us to address in here? There's a lot of information to sift through here and...
There is, there is a lot of information, and this is, I think this is kind of our first, this is our first experience with this type of development in the commercial area and this, to this magnitude. So I understand about the different layers and paperwork and such. And I think that in this case, we're going to be able to look at this a number of times in order to reevaluate every development that comes in. And so I think that JAMP understood from the very beginning, because this was our concern, that they're asking for a PUD over all of the land, but yet we don't know what's going to go in the rest of the land. And it's a little, I know there's a little frustrating on their part because they too don't know what's going on the rest of the land, and so it's hard for them to ask for deviations that they may or may not need on the future. But Hy-Vee wanted to be able to come in using the PUD to get deviations, and so we said, okay, we'll process this one, knowing that it's only Hy-Vee under this particular CUP at this time, and we'll amend it as we go along. So we're trying to be flexible, knowing that there are going to be more developments coming in, and we may have to amend the current PUD.
Because they'll all ride under the same PUD instead of having individual PUDs to individualize what they need in that particular use.
And I agree. And, you know, even on the staff level, we struggled, you know, so how are we going to, you know, process paper, you know, like how are we going to, you know, organize this and such? And so we'll come up with a plan as to how this is actually going to work after, you know, the first one we'll work through. What I don't know is, and I have to check with our attorney, my assumption is there's going to be a development agreement with each lot that comes through because there were some issues that came up earlier as to cost and particulars to each lot. My assumption is there's going to be a developer's agreement with each lot and not one development agreement with JAMP for the whole thing because from what I understand, that would, the liability then would land with JAMP to make sure all the conditions were met, which I don't think that was the intent either. So there's some things we still need to iron out overall in the legal end, but from a planning perspective, if you're uncomfortable with, if you're uncomfortable with any of the planning issues, which, you know, in this particular case, I think we all agree that Hy-Vee is a great use for this corner and convenience, so we agree with planning. You know, if you feel that, you know, some of the deviations for setbacks is just not appropriate because it doesn't work, or the circulation doesn't work, or you don't think they have enough park spaces and those sorts of things, I think then we need to address with them and say, no, I think, I think we need to do this, that. But overall, if you're comfortable with the site plan, because that's what we're doing with them, is the site plan review and looking at building elevations and what the store's going to look like and the design they picked out and the sign, then I think that's what Hy-Vee is looking for today. The other thing, if you don't like the deviations as JAMP has presented, then I would say go back to, you know, we would give them feedback and say, well, I think that's too much, or I think that's too little in certain areas. So I think that's what they need for feedback today. And if you're uncomfortable with making those decisions today, then we have to come back with answers to your questions on those things.
Let's go to the site plan real quick here. You state that you want to make two entrances to this, correct? That's new, right? That just came in? The two entrances or the exit, or was that always there?
I think that was always, we always anticipated having two entrances.
Okay, the one the farthest to the north there, is that in the lot in your property then?
It is not.
So if you were the first one to go in there, is that going to be all developed then by JAMP or is that going to be developed by Hy-Vee?
So Hy-Vee, if they were to go in first, they would build that road section, and if the city was still an owner at that point at which that was constructed, or at the point at which Hy-Vee closed, then they'd probably request an easement from the city for that road section.
You're talking about here?
No, I'm talking about by the north. I mean, yeah, north, up in the corner. Up here.
Up here.
So it's not in your block? It's not on your property?
Correct. It's not on our parcel. That, right, yes, that area there. The area shaped like a hatchet.
So did I lose something here? Or is JAMP buying all this property at one time or is it just piecemealing?
JAMP has control to buy the whole parcel.
Oh, the whole parcel?
Correct.
But to take it down in chunks.
Okay.
As opposed to buying it all at one time.
So is JAMP going to buy that piece there first? If Hy-Vee buys...
Most likely, Hy-Vee will be the first property to close.
Okay.
So Hy-Vee would buy that property, and they would, they would get an easement from the city for this parcel that JAMP would have to consent to, but they would get an easement for that road connecting these parcels. Ultimately, whatever JAMP puts in that parcel to the north is going to want across access easement with the Hy-Vee parcel as well. So it's, it's really, it's part of a overall master development plan to have lots connecting, and so this would sort of be the first puzzle piece to some of those, the continuity of the overall project.
You know, Phil, if, can you take the planning commission? Because I think we've looked at the site plan with the EDA and the council, but I don't know that the planning commission has actually gone through your, you mean, the site plan and then maybe taken through your building elevations?
So the plan itself, the store itself, I don't know what was reviewed from the EDA meeting that we had, but the store itself is a 10,800 square foot store, which is significantly larger than most other similar stores that you would see that have fuel pumps. So it's not a gas station. It has fuel pumps, but it's a small grocery store with a coffee shop and a liquor store is what's being proposed. So the coffee shop will have a drive-through, as you can see in the site plan. On the other side of the store would be the wine and spirit store, be roughly 2,500 square feet, plus or minus. And the balance of the store would be the market. And so inside of that, you'd have your, you'd have your convenience items, but you'd also have a high amount of other high-quality, say, produce, meat selection, dairy selection would be inside there, which is not commonly seen in stores that have fuel pumps. Also, through our aisles online and our locker program, you'd be able to order your groceries online and then come to this location, you'd be given a code. You'd enter into the locker and have access to all the groceries that are available in a full grocery store. So it's a nice way to get your food. That's how we get our groceries today. We order and then somebody does our shopping for us, and my wife never has to get out of the car with the two kids in the car seat, so it works out pretty nice. So you'll have access to that through the locker system at this facility as well.
I was trying to look for those.
So as far as the elevations and what the building looks like, it'd be similar architecture to the other buildings that we use. Most of the buildings like this are built with panels that have brick face inlay in them. So we do is we take out full brick, we actually cut the face off it and set that into a panel, and then those panels are put in place. There's variation in the architecture of the buildings because the coffee shop will have its own architectural elements. These is a dark woody tile-type material on the exterior of the building. And so if, for example, you've been to the gas station in, the Hy-Vee fuel station in Oakdale, you would see that variation in color of the coffee shop, which is a Starbucks, and then the fuel station there. So it'd be very similar to that in terms of that coloring in front of the Starbucks. But it's, uses a lot of glass, a lot of first-class material, brick, like I said, and four-sided architecture. And then this particular location, we're showing seven single-stacked pump islands or fueling islands with fueling positions on each side. I think that particular design and layout is nice for this location, particularly if you're towing a boat or trailer. So before you head out of the weekend, head up to the lake for the weekend there, you can see perfectly the color elevations, the brick and the glass. As I was saying, the fuel station pump islands are arranged in a single stack of pumps and makes it a very convenient way to fill up if you have a boat or a trailer, or if you're hauling a camper. We also pulled a couple long stalls to the very southwest portion of the site for, if you're hauling a camper, a place to park as you go inside and get your groceries, ice, beverages to fill up with.
Hey, Phil, when you have an eighteen wheeler coming in there to unload, how do they unload it? I don't, there's no dock or nothing. They just...
I think they will use, in this particular case, they'll use that area on the very west end of the location to unload, or they'll use that drive aisle where we're currently encroaching on the utility easement area, on the very south portion of the site, is where they would park and then unload from there. And they would drop a ramp and then, and then...
Wheel it in?
Yes.
Yes, Phil.
May I ask Elizabeth another question?
Yes.
So hearing from all of you and you and Elizabeth as well, seems like you guys have had quite a few meetings, and how does everybody feel about, I mean, are you, everything that's laid out here is well with you guys as well as with, in your meetings? I guess what I'm looking for is a consensus of how happy is everyone with all the meetings and everything that we have in front of us here? Are you feeling that all things are being met? Obviously, we have this umbrella and we're going to play as we go, but where we're standing with what's before us tonight?
You know, I think we're very pleased with, you know, we've worked with Hy-Vee now for 18 months in trying to get an ideal location for them here in Columbus because we feel it's a good fit for us. Us meaning Columbus overall, and they've been before the Economic Development Authority and before the City Council workshop. And so we feel that, you know, I mean, it's a good addition to the city and it fits the zoning district. And so I do think that they've worked with us, you know, through the, all the planning and the road and the stormwater and utilities and such, and those details will be worked out, you know, through the developer agreements. And I think it's just the first step of many, and they've already brought the second concept through with the EDA with some, the possibility of a mixed use with apartments. And so I think we'll progressively see how this, how the whole development lays out. So we're excited. We're, you know, as a staff, we're excited that they're here, and Hy-Vee brings along others that we hope will co-locate.
Thank you. I like everything I'm seeing here. It's just a lot of information.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. Commissioner, can I ask a couple? Maybe I'm missing something. Where are the lockers located on the site plan for Hy-Vee?
The lockers will get located as the final plan. I would say we're kind of a design-build type of an operation. So, for example, the building right now is shown as 10,800 square feet. There's, if it gets built as 10,800 square feet, I'm guessing there's going to be some flex in that, and some components might get bigger, might get slightly smaller. Ultimately, we're not going to make it so large that it starts to impact the parking. But my point is that where those lockers get placed will be as we start to complete design and construction documents start to be produced, and we need to know where we're running utilities for those lockers. We ultimately want to put them where they're accessible, easy to get to. There's been times where we've removed a pump island and replaced a pump island with the lockers. So that is yet to be determined, but we need to run utilities to it because we've got to be able to heat it and cool it. So if you have cold items that you get, it needs to be air-conditioned and cooled so they stay cold, so your ice cream doesn't melt.
I assume too, as far as people moving around, the safety of people, that they're not in the path of, I'm sure you keep that all in mind. You don't want any accidents.
Correct.
Do you plan on 24-hour, seven days a week as being open or...
We want to have the ability to be 24 hours. It ultimately would be up to the area supervisor if they want to tone that back, if they're not, if they don't need to be 24 hours. But we want the flexibility to be a 24-hour location. Not everybody works nine to five, and so to be able to serve people that work night shift is important. Also, with the kind of offering we're going to have here, I think having the flexibility to be open 24/7 would give people the chance to go grab something that they can't get elsewhere, and I think that would be important as well. But it could be that they find out that it's just not being utilized at 2:00 in the morning, and so they don't stay open.
Feasible. One other question on the umbrella part of it, and I know you guys have talked about an apartment complex and possibly a hotel, which I assume then you're going to have people moving around. Sidewalks? I mean, I'm not a big fan of putting sidewalks all over, but is there a thought process on that? Because I would think if you're going to have, probably more if you put a hotel, you're going to have more people maybe walking over to get food and that, you know? And I was kind of looking at the one layout where it showed the driveways that possibly would be interconnecting, and I realize people can walk on the paved areas of that, but as far as safety...
Yeah, that was a concept that was discussed early on by staff, that they did want some sort of interconnectivity, not only vehicular-based but also pedestrian-based, so...
So that is kind of a thought process.
Definitely in the overall, as you look at the overall concept plan, there's lots of interconnectivity between the parcels.
Yes. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I might just comment briefly on, especially your comment to whether staff felt things were progressing... to whether staff felt things were progressing and everybody was having a good feeling. I know from my perspective, from JAM's perspective, we've enjoyed our relationship with city staff, city attorney, in working through the various documents to get us to this point. And yes, there's some heavy lifting to do yet relative to creating some documents that we can't say, here's the document, here's the development agreement. We do have a preliminary development agreement that is executed that sets forth a lot of the parameters, but it doesn't drill down into some of the detail as it will need to. And we have every confidence that we'll continue on the same path with staff and come to concurrence on those documents.
And I'll jump on that and say it has been a process, but it should be for a project of this size. There is a lot to think about and to plan for. And the city's right in the middle of it all with the DOT and the county and everybody else for all the other stuff that's going on out here.
Bridge, the realignment.
Yeah. There's a lot happening. This is ground zero of a lot of activity. And so there's a lot of coordination that has to happen. And so, you know, if there's any Ts that aren't crossed or Is that aren't dotted, it's because we're all in the midst of this planning process currently as well as the city is. So it's been a process like any. And I think for all the moving parts, I think we've progressed pretty well to get to here, really.
Yes, Jody.
Question. So in looking at the, when you're talking about sidewalks and such and having an apartment, people living there, have you thought about where school buses will be able to drop off and pick up kids? And are you willing to work with the school district so that they've got someplace that they're going to be able to maneuver through there?
I would say at the point at which there's an actual concept plan to bring back for the apartments, then that level of specificity would be necessary for that component.
And then snow removal. I mean, that's a big thing here. Last mile, well, this year anyway.
Like a week ago today.
Yeah, exactly.
That's where I was, so.
Yeah. And I'm not saying this, tell me. I'm just saying these are some things maybe you want to consider to think about when you're going forward with everything.
There's a lot of questions. I just think in an apartment complex, and this is down the road, you know, you got to YMCA just to the east of you. And there's not much walking traffic on that road. And I mean, that's a joint effort with Washington County and whatever. And that's in the future. We'll let that go. But it's an issue when we get to that.
And the bridge will have a walking or biking path with our new bridge. So that's something to really keep in mind when you're doing that development piece that hopefully it will tie right into some of that.
I think we have the flexibility on the plan to accommodate that. So it's really what's happening in the more macro sense and what we need to do. But yeah, we certainly have room to do it.
Any other discussion with this? Well, like everybody else, we can call you back up if we need to. And we'll open it up to the public.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for making it very clear.
Exciting. It is.
Probably don't have to move much. I'm going to start it again. We're going to open up the public hearing for the Northeast quadrant preliminary. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to get up, state their name or have an opinion or a thought on this project. The window's open, the door's open. Come on up. Guess you guys didn't have to walk far. I have no other questions. We're going to close the public hearing on that. And let's open up the discussion for the, for the commission then, unless anybody has any other questions.
I don't.
No. I do have one question for you, Elizabeth. You said that we can amend the PUD as we go forward. If you set certain conditions right now or that these setbacks are allowed and that for Hy-Vee's building, can you change those on the other ones? Or are you kind of locked in that you've already set precedence? And...
My understanding is that you can change it as we move along with the amendments?
Each piece of the property, each property will have different requirements.
Correct, but it's kind of an umbrella. You're looking for an umbrella of, and I think that's most of them. I mean, a general umbrella is.
I think that's why we were saying kind of the variations and...
Yep. And I think that was what was most difficult here is because Hy-Vee wanted to be able to use those variations, you know, I mean, under the umbrella, but we didn't know what else was coming in.
Right.
Wasn't that a lot of this easement that we're talking about? Don't attorneys cover that?
They do. And I do know that they've had several discussions over how to put this together.
So each block will be separate?
I'm not sure whether, I'm not sure whether they'll, I don't think they'll be different. I don't, I think there'll only be one PUD and one conditional use permit. I think there'll be many developer agreements.
Okay.
And then they'll have their own recommendations probably aligned with each individual? Like if they vary from the general PUD, maybe they may have certain recommendations they may...
And I will double-check with Bill, but I'm pretty sure, yes, you can amend the CUP to allow, you know, other variations on other lots.
Well, that, my opinion on the easements is I have no problem with that. If the city's covered, I mean, the way they state number two there, I agree fully. If they're going to do all the landscaping and all that, I mean, if you have a water main break or something, that's the city's responsibility anyway. I don't see using an easement over it unless it causes some, like the drain in my garage freeze, you know? I mean, if it drives the frost down and does something, I don't know. But that's an engineer's issue.
I do think, though, that each individual lot will have their own, like this is a permitted use, so they understand that they have to meet the uses of the code. But if there's others, like say if a conditional use permit comes in, they will have their own conditions. And Hy-Vee won't have to abide by those conditions. They'll have their own individual permits on their lot, even though there'll be cross-easements and those sorts of things that will be common.
It'll be kind of like a covenants on that aspect, that some things will apply to everybody in the uses. But then they'll have their own individual CUP as well.
And we did that on purpose with stormwater. Like everyone's going to share in the stormwater. Everyone's going to share in the utility costs. The road, you know, I mean, we didn't have road costs because we got LRIP dollars. But, yeah, there is some commonality to the whole development of the whole 20 acres.
Do you have anything, Barb? Jody, you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Chris?
No, I'm good.
Good.
So here we sit.
So what you do have, you have two applications that you have to make motions on. Hy-Vee has a site plan review. You do have a engineer letter that has a site plan review, which is dated April 13th, in which he has some layout comments and drainage comments. Whereas the planning report is strictly for the conditional use permit.
So which one do you want us to address first?
The conditional use permit has to come first.
Okay. And that's for the umbrella.
Mr. Chair.
Bill?
Guards, regards to the CUP, there's a staff recommendation, and I have a question about, number seven states that in the event the city council determines in its sole discretion that the development of the property is not being operated in accordance with any term or condition contained herein, the PUD/CUP may be revoked by the city upon proper notice in a hearing. City attorney's not here to answer my question in that regard, but I'm a little bit confused by the ability of the city just to pull the zoning. So in other words, Hy-Vee's, you would approve the CUP for the PUD, then you would approve the Hy-Vee site plan. But then Hy-Vee's zoning essentially would be conditioned upon whether or not the city decides in its sole discretion to remove the zoning. Am I understanding that recommendation correctly?
I think, well, let's look at this condition. And when you make your motion, I don't think this is quite, I don't think this is quite worded correctly.
Number seven.
Yep. Essentially, what this says is if someone doesn't, let's see, the city would have, under the conditional use permit, it can pull any permit. But I know what Phil's concerned about is he doesn't want someone else to be uncompliant and pull his permit under the CUP, which is...
But that's why they'll have a separate CUP.
And I don't think they're going to have a separate CUP, but I think they're going to have a separate, like a site plan review is separate. So he's under the conditional use permit to allow him flexibility and variation and get variations. That's what the PUD does. But I don't think the PUD dictates whether or not he's in compliance or not. I'll try, we'll work that out because I know what he's talking about.
So we're going to...
Yeah, and that, and yes.
Thanks, Phil.
So you'll check with Bill on that? Is that what you're...? Okay.
My interpretation of that, right or wrong, was we've got a purchase agreement as JAM. There's obligations we have under that purchase agreement. If we default, the city has remedies. We have a preliminary development agreement that's executed, which needs to go to the stage of a formal development agreement. That too will have performance obligations. If we default, the city has remedies. And I kind of see those documents as governing the relationship between us relative to whether or not we're in compliance with the PUD/CUP. Because you're putting conditions on as we move forward on particular lots, like with Hy-Vee, a separate lot block. We envision every single building being a separate lot and block. As I say, you're going to get a lot of bites at the apple on every application request that comes before you.
All clear, understanding? I can... So Elizabeth, how are we going to vote on this? Leaving that out? Number seven?
Subject to legal review of number seven.
Okay.
Subject to...
Subject to the legal interpretation or whatever.
Review.
Yeah, and yes, we'll clean up the language there. I also want, I want to clean up the language where somewhere in here, it should have a little bit more language about individual lots. Yes, the PUD is overall, but then the individual lots, you know what I mean, as to what variations are going to be. There's some language that needs to be tightened up. And I'll have it tightened up by next week.
Any other discussion?
In the staff recommendations of number four, can we change the use of each instead of the property developed? Would that help with what you're looking for?
So you want to say development of property...
Must be consistent with all local, federal, and state laws that apply to the use of each property developed.
Okay.
So that kind of singularizes each business as they come through.
What do you think about that?
Each property as developed?
That section's dealing with the property being the overall property. You want to make sure the overall property is compliant with, it's capital P, property, so it's dealing with the whole entire...
The 20 acres.
The whole 20 acres.
Okay.
Oh, so that isn't...
Is this whole section going to be looked at again?
It is.
And number five kind of covers that too.
Yes.
That's more aligned to what we're looking at as far as clarification for the properties. And we could ask our attorney too to, if he needs more verbiage in that area, do you think, Elizabeth? For number five? For more clarification or definition?
Mm-hmm.
Is this going to have to come back to us? Or can we just...
I think the recommendation, as long as the planning commission is in favor of having a planned unit development over the entire 20 acres, I think the recommendation should be that the attorney should review the entire planning report to make sure it's consistent with how a planned unit development would be in this particular case. I think the report was more tailored for an individual lot and not over 20 acres. And so I think there's some areas that have to be tailored. But I think the findings of fact are appropriate, but there might be some additional findings they may have to do in order to address the entire 20 acres. And not just one development. Which it kind of does with the four-out lots. I just want to make sure that the attorney feels it's appropriate for the entire 20 acres. I don't know that Bill had an opportunity to read this before it went out.
Jody, you have anything else?
No, and I think number two states that for the PUD/CUP, contingent to the attorney's recommendation. So that kind of covers him being able to flex if he needs to.
How do we want to do this, Elizabeth? I just want to take a vote on it and pass it on, see what happens.
For the conditional use permit?
Yes.
I think you could certainly do that as long as everyone is comfortable with the concept and then subject to the attorney review.
Pardon?
Do you have to make a motion?
Yeah, do we have to make a motion on this?
You do.
Huh? Who's going to make the motion?
It's going to be detailed.
I would make the motion, Mr. Chair, that we, the planning commission, send forward the JAM LLC application for conditional use permit for planned unit development for the property at 3597 JAMP LLC, north of 97, east of the 35 Bridge, Columbus, Minnesota, Anoka County, with the findings of facts of one through 10 and the staff recommendations of one through eight, subject to the review by our legal staff. I would request that be moved for approval.
I second.
Well, we have a second, so let's go. Well, we have a second, so let's go for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, we'll pass it on to the city council.
So, at our last, our last Economic Development Authority meeting, the Economic Development Authority looked at naming the northeast, the northeast quad. They had a list of 35 different names, and they felt that the northeast quadrant should have Columbus in its name, because they felt that we should have some identifier in there. And the three names that they are going to propose to the developers is, the first one was Columbus Crossing, the second one is Columbus Plaza, and the third is Columbus Commons.
Third one?
Columbus Commons. So what's the Planning Commission think of those?
Pretty standard.
Yeah.
Pretty blah.
We had 35 different names.
You didn't have the split in there? I always think of it as the split.
Oh, as the split.
We want people to stay.
Well, no, the split, everybody...
You know, there was Columbus Promenade, and, I mean, there was all sorts of different names, about Columbus Corner, yeah, there was Columbus Place.
Well, whatever, it'll be Hy-Vee from now on, just go over to Hy-Vee. Do we have another issue we gotta vote on, and was that it?
You do have to, yes, you do have to approve the Hy-Vee site plan.
Okay.
Or recommend approval of the site plan.
Recommend.
And in that one, you've only, you only have an engineer's review, and that is on page five, and that is dated April 13th.
You're talking about the one dated April 13th?
This one.
There might have been another one in your, in your packet, I think. In the packet, I think it was dated the 12th, and then there was a revision.
Do we wanna include that, or just take the latest one?
The latest one would be good, thanks.
That must be the 13th, then.
April 13th.
Is that one right there?
This one, yeah.
Huh? Yeah, all right. So the one that got stapled to it is April 14th before, but that's the other...
No, there's entirely too many TKDAs and...
Yeah.
...rates in there.
Too many papers.
So what do we need here? Do we need a motion, or what?
You do.
Okay. How do we motion a site plan, then, just...
So, so a site plan review is just that you, you accepted the building elevations, the sign that they proposed was the monument sign that showed gas pricing, it was made out of brick and such, and the overall site plan that you saw as far as layout. And then the, the engineer commented on a little bit of the layout about driveway accesses and such, and I would make your, your recommendation subject to his engineer report.
Mr. Chair, entertain the motion.
Yes.
Okay, we, the Planning Commission, would send forward to the city council the application for the site plan review for the Hy-Vee, and it's still the same address as before. This is Columbus 3597 JAMP LLC, at Highway 97 and Highway 35 Bridge, Columbus, Minnesota, Anoka County, with the TKDA recommendations and the building sign and site elevations that were, spoke of during the hearing, and I would recommend that for approval.
Can we add the date to that, T?
Yes, thank you. That would be the April 13th, 2019, letter from our city.
And I'll second that.
We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nobody opposes, so pass it on with our recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we move along. It's complicated.
Yeah, that was, that's a new one for us.
And, Mr. Chair? Jesse? Two things. I know they took up the CUP and PUD and the site plan, the preliminary plat and final plat. Did they make a motion for the grand quest plat?
I did.
Yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay. So then we need, we need a motion for the northeast quad, I-35, preliminary and final plat.
Is that on the agenda?
Yes, it is.
It's not.
I'll go with it. Somebody wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
We're talking about the whole concept.
It's, it's the plat itself, it's the, it's the outlots, it's the initial presentation I made outlining why we had the outlots and the road and such. So you're just, you're just recommending approval of the preliminary and final plat?
Other way...
And that's the city's application.
Okay, that's the one where we're gonna vacate Hornsby and Doyle.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd entertain that motion as well, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you, Jody. Lucky we got you down on that end there.
Yeah, she's the anchor.
That we, the Planning Commission, would send forward to the city council, recommendation of approval for the preliminary and final plat of the northeast quadrant 35 in Columbus, 3597 JAMP LLC, at 97 and 35E in Columbus, Anoka County, for approval.
I'll second.
Hearing that it was second, we'll take a vote on it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nobody's opposed it, we'll send that on with our approval, or our recommendation. I take that back.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number 13.
We have a public open forum. What happened to the days when people used to get up and say stuff? Nobody's here for the public open forum. Number 14 on the agenda, city administrators' report.
I had Lori send out another email to all of you about training. I think the first one, the first trainings were all about Planning Commission member, and now the second set of trainings is about zoning basics, and I think there were a few other titles. So, as we get the different programs, we're just gonna email out to you and see whatever best fits your schedule, as the city council indicated that the planning, planning commission members could go to training as they, as they felt fit or sort of fit.
And the option to do it over the web, that's still an option.
Yeah, I think the virtual class, if you wanna sign up for that, I think that's also open to you. The one other thing that I'm also gonna have an opportunity, the League of Minnesota Cities also has classes, and I will also send you the information for those, and that's also an online class, and it also helps us out with our insurance. And so, a certain, a certain percentage of the Planning Commission and council have to take the class, and I think, Jody, you took the class, and, I don't know, Pam, did you take the class years ago, too?
Uh, I don't know if I took that one, because I attended all the things I took.
Okay.
I don't think I did that one.
So, I'll send, I'll send everyone the information, and that one is strictly online.
So, is the city, the League of Cities, is that free?
It is.
And the other ones that me and Barb signed, well, we haven't signed up for it yet, but we're looking at May 16th.
Okay.
But we're not really into computers, so we're gonna go down visually and...
Oh, you're gonna go, actually go to classroom, seat time?
Yeah, you can touch it and do all that stuff, so...
For dinosaurs.
If anybody wants to ride along, the door, car's open. Is that it, Elizabeth?
That's all I have.
Planning Commissioners' report? I don't have anything, but let's go around the vote here. Chris, do you have anything?
The only thing I have is, it's nice to see what's coming in front of us and, and the development that's going on. That's, that's wonderful to see, after sitting here so many years and not seeing much going on, it just, it's wonderful. It's exciting.
Great.
I'd like to thank staff for all that hard work. That's a lot of papers, that's a lot of things, nice job, and it seemed like you guys were very fluid with each other, and a lot of work had been done, so really appreciate that. Thank you.
Kudos.
Jody?
And I wanna say, I think it's great, too, and I know this is called a smart growth, and I think they are very versed in how this process goes, bringing in all those entities of different businesses that they know will work in a specific area. So I foresee that we're gonna see a lot of growth quite quickly in that area once they get going.
Yeah, once that first one goes in, it'll just be like...
Yep.
I think it's very positive and, and exciting, and a lot of hard work for everyone, especially Elizabeth.
Thanks.
Yeah, I see that, too, and I wanna thank you, Elizabeth, and Jessica, and Lori, and everybody in the staff.
Yes.
You make our job a little easier.
A lot easier.
It's a lot of paper.
Yeah, and speaking of paper, speaking of paper, I talked to Lori today, and if these maps that we got, we get, she'll take them back, so we don't have to reprint them for the council or whatever. We can put them in a blue box, and she can dig through them, or whatever.
Kinda keep my stuff, so that I know...
And I guess I'll be at the next council meeting, trying to clear up whatever was said here, but the mayor's here.
And the council.
And the two council members, so we don't have to say much.
And I saw Denny in the back, too, so that'll be good.
Before you leave, we have to talk to Denny.
Yeah.
Oh. Your new hire.
Oh.
Hello. For those of you who haven't attended any of the meetings that the council's been at with us, Ben Gutinek is from Wisconsin, but that's all right. And he's going to be the new planner to take over as much of Dean's job as he can. So, probably he'll start next week, if all the paperwork goes through, et cetera, et cetera. We interviewed him twice.
Twice.
And...
Passed the test.
So far, so good. So tonight, he was just sitting in to listen, to see what, what we do here, and how much he can help us, and he'll stay a little bit if you wanna visit. We wanna welcome him. We've got a lot of planning to do, obviously, and welcome to Columbus.
Thank you. May we get a little bit of info? How about you?
Yeah, so, like Jesse said, from central Wisconsin, I went to University of Stevens Point, where I majored in natural resources planning and resource management, and I've been kind of bouncing around the Minneapolis metro area. I worked with the city of Savage for about four months, then most recently with St. Croix County, just across the river, and both have been in, like, planning GIS and natural resource capacities, so, kind of also in the metro area, which I've really enjoyed working here, like, being kind of outside of the city and then getting, getting to know just the different challenges, so it's been a lot of fun. I'm really happy to be here and have this opportunity.
Excellent.
So I agree with Chris, I think you were saying that just seeing this kind of development in the community is kind of, I think, a really cool time to be here.
It's great, because you can be busy.
Yeah, it is.
We're just throwing Ben White in.
Yeah, welcome.
Good learning.
Trial by fire.
Not to put you on the spot or anything, but can you rate us? One to 10?
Be careful. That was a lot of information. Not, not tonight, give us a couple more, which...
So I can see him running, no rose screaming.
Yeah. Well, if he didn't do it tonight...
Well, welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome. Where, where in Wisconsin?
Oh, Wausau. Right, right in the south.
My husband grew up in Wausau. Yeah. Yeah. So I get there, no, I like it, the smell, when you first come in, it's like, he's in Schofield, so we come right in there, and it's like, yeah, well, welcome, I'm excited.
I know Elizabeth is excited to have you.
He's seen the piles on my desk, I think, I think he's like, oh my God, why does she have all those piles on her desk?
Cause we need them.
Just waiting for you.
Well, that's good, it's better than being bored.
No, I'm kind of angry.
Shall we, shall we adjourn this meeting, then we talk? I see Jessica over there.
She's ready to go home.
Everybody wanna make a motion?
Some will.
Second?
I'll throw it. The ring's closed.
Wow. That was a lot of stuff.